Okay, Article One. Do you hear the report of the Finance Committee? Other town offices and committees or act on anything relative there too? Somebody from the Board or Finance Committee first?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Kevin Kennedy for the Auburn Finance Committee. The Auburn Finance Committee makes the following recommendations on the Special Town Meeting Warren Articles. Articles two through 23, the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval of these articles. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Kennedy Chair, Michael Marshall Vice Chair, Edward Coleman, Patrick Jones, Trevor Sansucci, George Graham, and Stephen Concilio. Thank you.
Okay, I know there's a report from the Fire Department coming. Select Board, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Select Board.
Good evening. The Auburn Select Board makes the following recommendations on the Special Town Meeting Warren Articles. Articles two to 23, the Select Board voted to recommend approval of these articles. The Board of Selectmen also wishes to thank all Town Meeting members. Your participation in the Town Meeting process is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. It's my fault. Oh, you mean I'm too hard? Oh, it's where I'm at. Thank you. Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Greg Bulling. I'm with the Fire Station Building Committee, and we would like to take a very short opportunity to kind of give you an update on what's been going on. So do you have a proposal or a presentation that you might like? Okay, so next slide. So just a quick recap of sort of like where we started at. So we have two existing fire stations in town. Fire Headquarters there on Auburn Street, which was built in 1964. In 1984, the West Street Fire Station was opened, but it's basically just the gymnasium cafeteria of the old Randall Elementary School that had garage doors put on it. In 88, 98, they added the second floor to the existing Headquarters building. It's only on one half of the building because the structure of the apparatus floor does not support a second floor, so that's essentially the maximum expansion capability on the existing Headquarters building. Early 2000s, the department became full-time, first 24/5, then 24/7, then adding ambulance and paramedic services. So from its, you know, initial construction for that fire station, the department has changed significantly. And then in 2017, 2018 timeframe, as we updated the master plan, it was determined that the existing facilities, especially the West Street Station, are really not adequate for the department's needs. So that's sort of the background of kind of how we got into this. So 2019, 2020 timeframe, this is when an advisory committee was put together to sort of study, you know, what was needed, what would be the right fit. There was a separate study that was done by a professional organization. The recommendation there was to try to solve the space needs of both the Fire Department and the Police Department with a new single, you know, public safety building. So a committee was formed to sort of shepherd that process through. As they went through the studies and designs and looked at, you know, the needs of the departments, it became clear that in order to maintain the right service levels, there were really a limited number of sites that would be feasible for a project for a single, you know, fire station, police station building. The town had put out for bid a couple of times to see if a couple of target properties would be offered for sale, and they were never responded to. So as we got into 2023, the decision was made to not pursue a consolidated public safety building and instead look at a replacement for the West Street Station and the Fire Headquarters needs there. So the existing Public Safety Committee was then dissolved. If we go to the next slide. So on the October 2023 Special Town Meeting, money was allocated by Town Meeting to do some conceptual designs for a new fire station at the West Street location. And then shortly thereafter, the Chuck's Ten Prospects Street property became available. And so then we had a January Special Town Meeting where we allocated the funds to purchase the Chuck's property, as well as all of the demolition and site work and hazard remediation and everything associated with that. This past August is when the new Fire Station Building Committee was formed, and that committee is tasked with preparing a project proposal for Town Meeting and for the public for a new Fire Headquarters station that would exist on the Ten Prospects Street property. So going forward in the future, so what we have today is a warrant article before you that would reallocate some cost savings due to the demolition of the Chuck's property that would allow the committee to hire an owner project manager, which is a technical resource that helps us shepherd the project through, helps us with picking the right, you know, materials, estimates, cost considerations, all the things that we need to do in order to prepare a full plan for Town Meeting to review. So the committee is going to continue to work with the OPM as well as the architecture firm that we've hired to put conceptual designs together, to put project plan together, arrive on costs, deal with funding issues, basically put everything together into a package of this is how we would, you know, this is the building that meets the needs, this is how we would, you know, fund it, this is how everything would need to happen, so that that could go before Town Meeting and the general election in May. And if you've been around for like the middle school or the past schools, Town Meeting has to approve the funding, but the general election at large will also be sort of a contingency in that article. So essentially, the vote of the people will decide whether, you know, they want this project or not. Town Meeting would just be authorizing to spend the money if the general election, you know, approved it. And that's all I got. So just wanted to give you a quick update. If you have any questions, there's a number of Building Committee members here, as well as Chief Coleman, so when that article comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Ed, do you want to speak before the article is read, number two?
Mr. Moderator, I'll wait until after the motion is made to the second, then I'll get up.
Yeah, in the article, all the things are read first. Okay. Noreen, Article Two.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Two. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend Article Three of the May 7, 2024 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item 011-292-530100. Town Manager advertising from $5,700 to $11,000. Increase line item 11-322-5781. Reserve Fund from $295,000 to $350,000. Increase line item 011-322-5782. Salary Wage Reserve from $60,000 to $67,354. Increase line item 011-521-511146. HR Generalist from $0 to $350, I'm sorry, $31,500. Increase line item 011-522-5307. HR Medical Exams from $9,000 to $15,000. Increase line item 011-992-5214. General Services, Water Sewer Heating from $70,000 to $90,000. Increase line item 011-992-5480. General Services Gas, Oil, Diesel from $290,000 to $300,000. Increase line item 011-992-5740. Insurance and Bonds from $960,000 to $990,000. Increase line item 012211-5130. Fire Overtime from $335,000 to $435,000. Increase line item 012921-51127. ACO Backup Coverage from $23,860 to $33,860. Increase line item 013032-5691. Norfolk Agricultural Assessment from $54,355 to $87,889. Increase line item 014331-511133. Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator from $52,934 to $55,908. Increase line item 019101-5172. Unemployment Compensation from $50,000 to $75,000. Increase Available Funds Ambulance Receipts from $1585,000 to $1635,000. Increase Available Funds Overflow Trash Bags from $30,000 to $33,000. And further, to approve and amend fiscal year 2025 budget for the Town of Auburn to
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there somebody who can give me more light in the auditorium? I can scarcely see people tonight with darker clothes on. We need more light in the auditorium. Well, not quite that. Somewhere half and half. Actually, it's on me rather than on the auditorium. You can see them? Okay, leave it the way it is. All right, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everyone hear me?
Perhaps down at the podium.
No. Oh, the mic is on.
It's too dark.
Hey. Is that better? Thank you, everyone. I'm Ed Kazanovich, Town Manager, and I wanted to provide a summary tonight for you in what we're asking you to consider in this warrant tonight. There are 23 warrant articles that are being presented, and it totals $1,965,625. When we break that out by warrant article, by funding source, it breaks down, is the breakdown being asked tonight is as follows. From General Fund Revenues, which is a combination of local receipts and general taxation, we're asking for an appropriation of $455,986. An additional $125,000 is coming from ambulance receipts. That's a special revenue restricted account, can only spend for, can only be expended for ambulance-type activity. We're asking free cash in the amount of $903,639. Our free cash policy allows for 50% usage for one-time expenditures, non-budget, operational-related, to be utilized for various items under the policy, that being capital improvement items, OPEB stabilization. We are requesting 903 out of the 50% of available of $1.235 million, leaving a balance of $331,000 and change not being requested as part of that policy. Other available funds, we're asking $11,000 request. Overlay surplus, which has recently been certified through the Assessors Office and our Chief Financial Officer of $25,000. And miscellaneous retained earnings of $445,000 for a total, once again, of $1,965,625. I wanted to show where we ended at the annual Town Meeting in May by funding source and what is available for consideration at the fall Town Meeting and what that difference represents. So we asked at the annual Town Meeting of tax levy of $47,504,858.67. We're asking for an additional amount primarily generated through new growth that was above and beyond what we estimated at the annual, for a new revised tax levy amount of $47,602,256. Available funds increase of $1,571,073.92, primarily made up of a free cash amount of $900,000. Other available funds of 11, that was shown on the first slide, and retained earnings of $455,000. The state aid numbers, the final numbers came in higher by $171,359. And our local receipts amended to reflect more of what we actually received as of June 30th, an additional $191,631. A difference in appropriations, not including tonight's consideration of $65,961, primarily made up of cherry sheet charges and offsets and a slight fluctuation in our abatements and exemptions. Total available for Town Meeting consideration, $1,965,500. Our retained earnings and our free cash was determined by certification by what we provide to DOR for our year-end certification. Those numbers were approved on October 2, 2004, which then led to a recommendation that you'll see tonight in various warrant articles for funding out of free cash to fund our OPEB, to fund our stabilization, and to fund a variety of other one-time warrant articles that are CIP-related. So, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, that's a summary of what we're asking of you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as we address the warrant articles that are being considered tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Okay. Then we're ready, and it's been made and seconded, so we can now vote. All those in favor of the article signify by raising their hands. No, oh, we're going to do this, right. No more hand raising, gee. No more. What school going to be like? Okay. Okay, we're turning it off now. And the vote is 76 in favor, three opposed, and no absentee, I think. No, correct? All right. Noreen, the next, so that article passes now. Let's go to Article Three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Three. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend Article 12 for the Medicaid reimbursement amount approved for fiscal year 2025 at the May 7, 2024 Annual Town Meeting from $140,000 to $160,000 to better align with the actual and anticipated general fund revenues. This article funds supplies and medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placement or within the district for special needs students.
Okay. Is there a second? A second, all right. Are there any questions? Okay. And the article passes 79 to 1 to 0. Article Four, Noreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Four. I move that the Town Meeting vote to appropriate $18,639 for McKinney-Vento receipts from free cash to reflect additional funding issued from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in June of 2024 to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2025 to fund additional transportation costs incurred for students to and from, to and from school who have become homeless during the fiscal year.
Is there a second? Okay. Are there any questions? Over there, there's a question.
How many homeless students do we have in our community? Because the next article is the same question, and this is just, it's more and more and
So this is funding that we've gotten from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Right now, we have approximately 51 homeless students in town, and this does help to provide for transportation for anyone who may. So let's say if a student began with us one year and then they moved to another district, they have the right to continue with us until they find permanent home, housing, and we have to provide that transportation. So this particular article, normally we receive that reimbursement from the state a year after the cost incurred, was incurred, but because we've had a rise in students, they gave us this money sooner than that. So this is an unusual amount of money, unusual time of year for us to receive this, but they did so because we incurred an additional number of costs in the past year to transport homeless students.
So we have 51 students who are not living in town that we're transporting back to town.
No, no, no. So some of them are living in town and some are not.
It just seems, seems like an overwhelming amount.
I will tell you, transportation now is one of our greatest expenses. Transportation has become a huge boon in the state, across the state.
They can't get picked up by the regular bus, the ones in town?
Yeah, they do, they do, but this is for when we have to transport some from out and in, if there's any special transportation that need is, is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Do you see any? Okay, seeing none. Well, there is somebody?
Mike Marshall from Precinct Five. I'd just also like to point out that what we're doing here is appropriating funds out of a receipts account. We already have this money. This is not money that's coming like from the town, and to be clear, the next article is the same, so just bear that in mind.
One. Look, he's going to have. Okay. Any other? Okay, and the vote is 79 to, I think, two? No, to three, to three to zero, 79.
79.
To two? Oh, okay. See, first you gave me two. Oh, okay. It's your pen that I was counting. Okay, Article Five, Noreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Five. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend Article 14 for the McKinney-Vento receipts amount approved for fiscal year 2025 at the May 7, 2024 Annual Town Meeting from $23,481 to $30,805 to align with the actual funds received to fund additional transportation costs incurred for students to and from school who have become homeless during the fiscal year.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah, I see a second, right. Are there any questions? And the article passes 75 to four to zero. Okay, Article Six, please, Noreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Six. I move that the Town Meeting vote to repurpose the balance of $25,942.23 from the Auburn Senior Center Frozen Pipe Account 065412-582365 for miscellaneous building and HVAC repairs at the Auburn Senior Center.
Is there a second? Yep, there is. Are there any questions? Anybody see any? Okay, the vote is 76, four, seven, five against, no abstentions. Okay. Article Seven, Noreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Seven. I move that the Town Meeting vote to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? I think I see yes or is. Are there any questions? Anybody see any? Seeing none, we can vote. Okay, it passes seventy-two to six to zero. Okay, Article Eight.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Eight, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the Town OPEB Trust Fund.
Is there a second? There is a second. Oh, are there any? Okay, are there any questions? Seeing none, we can vote. Seventy-four, yes, three, no, and one extension. Seventy-four, you know, town. Article Nine.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Nine.
Did I say it was seventy-four? Did I tell her what? Yeah, I did, okay, good. Yeah, Article Nine, sorry, excuse me, Doreen.
Article Nine, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate a hundred and seven thousand dollars from free cash for core network switch replacement.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Can you see any? Seeing none, we can vote. What, seventy-seven to two to zero? And it passes with seventy-seven, uh, two against and no abstentions. Article Ten. Doreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Ten, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars from ambulance receipts to establish an EMS contingency account.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Yes, somebody, well, somebody at the mic?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Coleman.
Chief, yeah, okay.
Steve Coleman, Fire Chief. I just want to explain. I'm sure I run my back to you. I just want to explain what the EMS contingency account is. So one hundred percent of the town's EMS operation is funded through ambulance receipts. Town Meeting is the only body that can allocate money from the ambulance appropriations account to any particular function. So again, a hundred percent of the EMS budget, including EMS capital, like ambulances, is purchased through that account. Because Town Meeting is the only body that can authorize it, that means that there's only two times a year that we potentially have access to make a request for that money. What we're finding is our current EMS supply line, if you look within our operating budget of thirty thousand dollars, that's another line that is funded through the ambulance receipts. But over the years, as costs have rise, uh, costs rise, uh, drugs, drug costs have risen, we oftentimes, in the course of a fiscal year, find that we're really pushing the limit on the medical supplies line. And what really throws a monkey wrench into it is if a piece of equipment, like one of the cardiac monitors, or an IV pump, or something goes down that needs to be replaced. If we don't have money within the medical supply line, we're forced to go to other line items within the budget, or if we don't have enough, we would need to come to the reserve fund. And now we start spending money from the levy on a function that is a hundred percent funded through ambulance receipts. So this contingency account, um, this is not a revolving account. This is a one-time ask of seventy-five thousand dollars that would have oversight by the town's chief financial officer. So in the event that we needed to access this money in order to subsidize an EMS-related need within the department, we would make that request through the CFO. If granted, we would spend it. Now, the intent is not to come back on an annual basis and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand dollars is a number right now that we're comfortable as a max threshold. So let's say in two, two and a half years, we run that account down to ten thousand dollars. We would now come before Town Meeting with another outside article, like you see tonight, asking to replenish the EMS contingency account back to seventy-five thousand dollars. We felt there were many options, um, and the Finance Committee had a lot of good questions the night that they reviewed this, um, and this was the cleanest way to do it, as not to mix EMS-related funds with the levy. So I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions? Seeing, do you see? Seeing none, we can vote. And it passes seventy-eight to four to zero. Article Eleven, Doreen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Eleven, I'm, excuse me, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate twenty-eight thousand dollars from free cash, which was received by the Fire Department from an insurance reimbursement to the Fire Rescue Department overtime account, zero two 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 one one dash five one three zero.
Are there any questions? I need a second. Second, second, I have a second. Are there any questions? I think I see somebody is.
Hi, hello, Christina Nashville, Precinct One. I just have a question for clarification. I noticed that in Article Two, uh, there was a request for the Fire Rescue overtime account for a hundred thousand dollars, and then this article for twenty-eight thousand dollars, and then in Article Twelve for eighty-four thousand dollars, for a total of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for overtime, and I just was looking for clarification on what that really, that all that encompasses. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question. Again, Steve Coleman. So this Article Eleven, uh, for this twenty-eight thousand dollars, this was a insurance reimbursement from a member that was injured. We do have a salary benefit that when an employee is out for more than sixty days, we start collecting a weekly payroll benefit. This payroll benefit came in after July first in a new fiscal year, even though it was for the previous fiscal year. So the only way to apply this money anywhere is by town meeting, so that's why it's before you tonight. We are asking that this money be placed in to this fiscal year's Fire Department overtime account, and we do have several overtime challenges, both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And I just want to go into a little detail just to explain some of the struggles that we've had there. So last fiscal year in FY Twenty-Four, uh, the first six months of the fiscal year between July first and January first, um, over the course of that six-month period, at one point, give or take a couple of bodies, we were down a total of fourteen employees. Nine were injured, a combination of a few on-duty injuries, the majority of them were off-duty injuries, um, you know, some for two to three months at a time, some were out, you know, six to seven months. And then on top of that, within that first couple of months of the fiscal year, we had five employee resignations. So again, at one point, we were down a total of fourteen employees. Now, keep in mind, there's four working groups, there's eleven members on each group. So I was, I was essentially, we were down the equivalent of a little more than one working group, which escalated over time in that. As I have pointed out to the Finance Committee, anybody that has been following the Finance, you know, committee meetings, um, a combination of last fiscal year and this fiscal year, one of the things that we have talked about, and the committee, Town Administration, myself, one of the things that we've been trying to wrap, uh, wrap our hands around, is what I will consider to be a structural deficit within our existing overtime budget. When you look in our budget, we are currently budgeted at three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. There is a request tonight to infuse an additional hundred thousand into that, so July one next year, the new starting point would be four thirty-five. Over a period of the last seven or eight years, our overtime has been anywhere from two hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred thousand dollars for the last eight years. We had a five-year period where our overtime was level-funded, um, despite five years of employees receiving annual cost of living raises. At one point, um, like on year six or seven, there was a reduction in the overtime. The following year, we made some strides to bring it back, um, a little bit above what it had been funded previously, um, at those levels when it was level-funded. So many, many years of the overtime sort of not escalating with our call volume and staffing, it's, it's put us in a bit of a, again, what I'll call a structural deficit. The Finance Committee, uh, back about a month ago, um, they had asked for a comparative study. They, they had a question of, you know, a comparative study on what do other towns, you know, around, um, you know, especially those that, and again, as I said to the Finance Committee, when you're talking about overtime, there's, there's two metrics in which you measure that. There's a lot of ways that we can compare communities, and we could sit here for eight hours tonight and, and talk about tax rate and all of those things, but really, when you're talking about overtime, it comes down to two main metrics. It comes down to how many calls do you do annually? So you have to compare yourself to people that are within your call volume, which for us is in that five thousand to six thousand calls annually per year, and how many people are you trying to do that with? What is your staffing? Those are the two main metrics. So we did a comparative study of twenty-nine other communities that ranged anywhere from twenty-five hundred to seven thousand calls. We looked at eight specifically in that five to six thousand range, and what we found was that our overtime budget, um, is, is budgeted significantly lower by about two hundred and fifty thousand on the average. So, um, the chairman and the vice chairman of the committee have been, have been briefed on that. Finance Committee has been great working with us, Town Management has been great working with us. So tonight, um, many of the moves that discussed Fire Department overtime, the hundred thousand dollars infusion is one way that we're trying to fix that structural deficit by infusing an additional hundred thousand dollars into the line item, permanently built into the budget. The remaining articles are, I'm in a similar boat this year, um, in terms of, as of today, I have, I have ten employees that I'm not counting towards the group. We have five new employees who are in training, two just graduated the Fire Academy, three are starting the Fire Academy, sorry, four are starting the Fire Academy on Monday, and I currently have five employees who are not working because one with an on-duty injury, four with off-duty injuries, that some of them will not be back until around the first of the year, maybe February. So again, with a group of eleven, I'm, I'm still essentially down one entire group within the department, which has escalated over time. So Article Twelve, that is another attempt to address overtime, and, and we got creative here because we're, we're trying to use funding sources that are either existing within the budget or are one-time expenses from somewhere else. Last fiscal year, we utilized a number of sources to try to fix the overtime deficit. We ended up using forty thousand dollars from the reserve fund, but we don't want to do that. We, we don't want to use the reserve fund or those other types of sources to fund it. So, um, this year, we sold an ambulance and we sold an engine. We got way more money than I really ever anticipated we were going to get for the engine. So, um, the move tonight in Article Twelve is to utilize thirty-four thousand dollars. We, we sold both vehicles for a hundred and eighteen thousand. We just took delivery of our new tanker truck, which, the engine too, which we sold, was the new tanker, was the replacement, but in order to limit the borrowing, I figured no equipment. There was zero equipment budgeted, so we borrowed to the penny exactly what we needed in order not to sort of overborrow on the interest. So out of this hundred and eighteen thousand, the plan was always, we were going to utilize a portion of the sale of the vehicle to purchase equipment for the new tanker, which is at thirty-four thousand dollars, and then the remaining eighty-four thousand dollars to put towards the overtime account in order to sort of Band-Aid and limp along. The good news is, as I've reported to the Finance Committee, I do see a light at the end of the tunnel because, you know, we're, we're always going to have injuries. Every workforce has injuries, you know, we, we normally have, you know, five to a half a dozen a year, you know, over the, over the course of a year, between on and off duty. But part of the other problem with the other five new employees is because they're new and in field training, they don't count towards the shift minimum. When they graduate from the Fire Academy on January thirty-first, they will all begin to count towards the shift minimum, so that will help slow overtime down. As we have reported to the Finance Committee, we do anticipate probably one more transfer before the end of this fiscal year in order to fix the deficit. But everybody's working hard within next year's budget to try to close that gap, again, based on that study that we found that did show that we were significantly underfunded based on the average of those other communities. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we can vote. It passes eighty-one to zero to zero. Article Twelve.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article Twelve, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from general fund revenues, sale of inventory account, zero one zero two two zero dash four eight one zero, from the sale of fire engine and ambulance to the Fire Rescue Department equipment account in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars and into the fire overtime account in the amount of eighty-four thousand dollars.
Is there a second? There is. Are there any questions? By seeing none, we can vote. By seeing none, we can vote. Okay, and it passes seventy-nine to zero to zero. Article 13.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 13. I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose funds by amending Article 2 of the January 30th, 2024 special town meeting as follows. Authorize at the sum of $100,000 from the current balance of $514,261 in the acquisition of 10 Prospect Street, account number 061292-582462, to be used for the purpose of contracting with an owner's project manager, OPM, to work with the fire station building committee for conceptual and schematic designs of a new fire headquarters located at 10 Prospect Street.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we can vote.
And what are you, are you pressing yes?
I'm doing yes.
Try. All right, so press yes again. Did it change?
Yeah. From seventy-two to five to three?
Yes, it passes seventy-two votes. Okay, Article 14.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 14. I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the annual town meeting 2023, Town Clerk Book/Map Repairs, account number 061612-582403, in the sum of $10,000 to authorize pole pad replacement and supplies in the sum of $10,000.
Is there a second? Yes, there is. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can vote. Oh, by the way, this is a two-thirds vote. And the reason for that is it's changing Article 4. And Article 4 in the annual has borrowing in it. So even though there's no borrowing in this particular article, it's still part of Article 4 and therefore it's got to be a two-thirds vote. All right, seventy. So yes, it is seventy-eight plus in favor, three against, and no abstentions, obviously, that's a two-thirds vote. Article 15.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 15. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $25,000 from overlay surplus 01-223020 for accessory valuation, training, support, and services.
Is there a second? Yes, there is. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Seeing none, we may vote. Okay, yes, it passed seventy-five for two against and one, two abstentions. Okay, Article 16.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 16. I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose the sum of $28,000, originally borrowed and approved for the purchase of electronic fingerprint scanner, account number 302020-582053, to authorize the sum of $28,000 to purchase four Motorola portable radios.
Is there a second? There is. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Seeing none. We, by the way, this again, this is a two-thirds vote because of the borrowing. And so, yes, seventy-three to six to one. So it passes seventy-three to six to one. Article 17.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 17. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $27,000 from general fund revenues to cover the cost of repairs to the DPW Highway Division Loader Number 18.
Is there a second? Yeah. Are there any questions? Yes, there's a question over here somewhere. Good.
Hi, David Engstrom, Precinct 4. I'm curious on what kind of repairs we're doing to this loader. Are they major repairs? Are they multiple minor repairs? And also, are we outsourcing this to be repaired? Or are we repairing it in-house?
Yeah, and yes. Oh, somebody's going, oh, okay.
Good evening. Nick Schwartz, Assistant DPW Director. So this is the Highway 18 loader, one of the three loaders in our fleet. The repairs to this loader were significant structural repairs as well as some engine work. They had to essentially separate the loader in half, bore out the articulating joint as well as the joints in the bucket. There was some engine work, some frame rot that had to get repaired, doors, brakes, air seat suspension, among other things. This is one of the jobs that we could not do in-house, which is representative of the cost of this. We simply don't have the equipment and expertise to do this type of work. So they get sent out. And the cost ultimately for this repair ended up being a little bit higher than what we're requesting here, but this should take a good chunk out of that cost.
Are there any other questions?
So it's 2011, so it's thirteen years old.
Okay. Anything else? Don't see anything. Okay, then we can vote, if I'm correct. Yep. Okay, and it passes seventy-nine to one to zero.
It's actually, it changed right after the emergency.
Oh, then it went up to eighty to two. Okay, it passes eighty to two to zero. Article 18.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 18. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $250,000 from sewer retained earnings to procure engineering and construction services for the design and construction of a sewer and manhole rehabilitation project, which is needed to repair known sewer defects in several locations throughout town based on the recommendations presented in the Year One Sewer System Evaluation Survey.
Is there a second? Yes, there is. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we may vote. Yes, it passes eighty-one to zero to zero. Yes, it passes eighty-one to zero to zero. Yes, it passes eighty-one to zero to zero. Article 19.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 19. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $15,000 from sewer retained earnings for the purchase of a sewer CCTV inspection vehicle.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can vote. Yes, and it passes seventy-eight to zero to zero. Article 20, and this is a two-thirds again.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 20. I moved at the town meeting vote to amend Article 4 of the May 2nd, 2023 annual town meeting so as to repurpose the sum of $80,000 remaining balance in line item 606-582430, truck replacement, F-250 with plow, used for the purpose of a new sewer CCTV inspection vehicle for the DPW Sewer Division CCTV inspection vehicle purpose. Purchase.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Seeing none, we may vote. And it passes seventy-nine to zero to one. Okay, Article 21.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 21. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $8,000 from expendable cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of a hopper spreader for salt application.
a hopper spreader for salt application.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can vote. It passes seventy-four to five to zero. Article twenty-two?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article twenty-two, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate one-hundred thousand dollars from the Pakajag Golf Course retained earnings to pave cart paths and make golf course improvements.
Is there a second? There is. Are there any questions? Seeing none? There is somebody, oh, good, yep, good.
Danny Lard, just Precinct Four, what are these paths made out of right now?
Somebody up back has the answer, yep. Coming down.
The cart paths are, are currently not paved, they're just on gravel.
So we can pave these things, but we can't get a sidewalk on Brenmire Extension of Warren Road? Pretty good.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we can vote. Yes, and it passes with sixty-seven? Sixty-eight to ten? Okay, sixty-seven to twelve to two. Sixty-seven to twelve to two. Now, we're coming to Article twenty-three, and I would ask you, after we pass or do whatever to Article twenty-three, not to rush to dissolve, there's something important I have to bring up to you. Okay, Article twenty-three?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article twenty-three, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate eighty thousand dollars from Pakajag Golf Course retained earnings to rebuild bunkers.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Hmm, yes? Somewhere? Yeah, somebody coming down, good.
Hi, David Angstrom, Precinct Four. Um, I'm just wondering if these are to repair every single bunker on the course, and what the repairs entail? As far as, are we just pulling the sand out and putting new sand in, or are we redesigning the whole bunker and edging and all of that?
So, we currently have a master plan in progress at the golf course, um, and the work would involve, um, four bunkers, twenty thousand dollars each, and that would be, um, replacing the entire thing, the liner, the sand drainage, all, with the whole again.
Any other questions? Yes. Coming down, couple? No, just one, okay?
Uh, I would just like to ask the question and see if I understand this correctly. All of this money is proceeds from the golf course? That account can only be used to improve the golf course? And so we're using this money to better the golf course, to increase the revenue that the golf course makes?
That is correct. That's retained earnings from the golf course.
Anything else? Seeing none, we may now vote. It's not showing up. What we did at High Stadium? I think it's going to pass soon. It'll pass right. Okay, it passes seventy? Oh, we're giving it a second? Make sure it gets on here. Seventy to nine to one? It passes seventy to nine to one. Um, okay, I've asked you not to dissolve yet, because something important is happening tonight. For those who don't know, this is Ed Kazanovich's last town meeting, I hope. We're not planning on one in the next month. Um, Doreen and I, who go back a long way in town meeting, were talking before the meeting began about how bad the finance statements, if there were any, were. You just never knew what you were going to get, and then Ed came in, and we have had nothing but excellent finance statements. It's one of the reasons, and I think tonight we're getting out of here around seven-thirty, it's one of the reasons we're getting out of here most nights by about eight-fifteen. Back in the day when Doreen and, Doreen and I were younger, at least I was, she probably was even younger, younger, um, we'd get out, if we were lucky, by midnight. So I think we should show Ed Kazanovich our appreciation for the excellence of his work.
Thank you. I, I promise I'll be brief, but... I can remember when I first came to Auburn, I was thirty-five years old, my hair was dark brown, and now I'll take a look at it. It's thin and it's gray, but, um, Charlie is right. I mean, um, I, I first stepped foot in Auburn High School, my first town meeting, um, as a rookie, and town meetings were very difficult back then, and they were very contentious, and, uh, there was a lot of debate, and a lot of, um, I, I want to categorize it as mistrust, because, um, things were difficult, uh, back, uh, when I came here thirty years ago. And, um, I honestly am humbled and respect the work that you do. That makes my job a lot easier, and I truly appreciate that. And, um, I want to thank everyone over the years for participating and volunteering your time to make government work. And, um, I'm proud of what we evolved on, because, uh, we can make recommendation, recommendations to you, but without your support, we wouldn't be here, uh, where we are today. So thank you very much, and I appreciate working with you. I will always keep Auburn in my heart, and I will follow things as things move along, and I just hope that there's a forward movement and a progression, uh, in terms of, um, what is done here in town. So thank you very much.
I will now entertain a motion to dissolve. We can leave. We don't have to stay.